All right, I have 5:31. It's time to call to the order the City Council Workshop for Thursday, November 7th, 2019. First item is, can we please all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we will just observe a moment of silence and reflection, please. Okay, I'd like to excuse absence for Councilmember Nyhagen.
Do we do that at workshops there, don't close?
She asked to have it, just to be recognized. Yeah. Correct, just we're just noting, excuse. Okay, then on to workshop topics. I know it was just Mr. Hartwig coming in with a little tap down, standing in the aisle, so he's up first discussing our WWTP operations conference with Jacobs.
Yes, I have to thank Lisa for putting me on first. Jacobs, or what we might recognize as CH2M Hill, is operating our dry water treatment plant. We asked them to review the contract in regards to possibly taking ownership of vehicles at the treatment plant and also doing the video inspection of the sewer mains. So they've reviewed the proposal, or the request, and given us, not a detailed proposal, but they gave us a price that they said wouldn't exceed, and we should see the actual agreement at a later date soon. And it would increase the price of the contract by about $200,000. Now, and then the differences that you're going to see is the contract, the new agreement or contract that you'll see would be for a 10-year period. The reason for that is because when they go out to releasing the big equipment, those are leased for a significant amount of time, and they're a significant price. They're probably in the range of $400,000. So when that agreement comes to us, you'll see that it will be for a 10-year period. Jacobs has done, I would say, a very good job for us. We get very few complaints, they are responsive to our requests. Right now, what we do is, we own, the city owns the vehicles, all of them, and then they, we allow them through our insurance, get insured on us that they can use the vehicles. We are coming soon to a point where we need to replace some significant value of equipment. The jetter, the skid steer, the dump truck, all of these pieces of equipment are expensive. We will, we would be looking at taking out loans or whatever to try to purchase this equipment if we were to keep ownership. And that, this is what's key, what's moving us toward this proposal and this request for that they would take ownership of equipment, and we could divest ourselves of some of that. Understand that some of that equipment would be kept in our fleet for a period of time. The Vactor, we still have to maintain storm drains and the storm system, so we still have to have equipment to do that. But we would anticipate that that equipment, right now, that we keep, for instance, the jetter, would be for a short term, and we'd be going back for an investment in that, or looking at some other way to do that, and do that work for us. We would not need the skid steer, so that could be just gone. We do need another dump truck, because the dump truck that's there is, is, you can't get parts for it anymore, so eventually, we're going to need to replace the dump truck. But we could use it in the meantime. The video inspection van that holds the equipment that inspects the sewer mains, we could do a couple of things with that. We could keep it and use it for a period of time, or we might be able to just contract with them to do inspection when we need it on our storm sewer. We wouldn't be doing that very often, and so that might be another way to handle that. The video inspection, what they try to do is they try to get through the sewer mains with cleaning every, once every five years. Right now, they've done it in basically three years, so they've been doing, they've been out there, they've been doing a good job for us. What they do, what they would end up doing now with the video inspection, and we just didn't have the time to do it, and to keep on it, so it's kind of like learning it all over again, trying to do that. And so what we, they would be able to go in, they jet several hundred thousand, or several thousand feet, then they go in and TV it right away, so they get a better look at it rather than waiting for several months, and then come back, and then we, then we got some problems to clean it again and so forth, to do that. So it would really be a help on our crews to be able to have consistent video inspection, so we know where our problems are, and do it in a timely fashion, which we do not have the time to do. I would entertain any questions.
$200,000 on the life of the contract, or is that per year?
Per year.
So preliminary estimate at 1.2 million, that's an annual?
That's an annual cost. Right now, we're at 1.020, something like that.
So this should be basically turnkey sewage treatment plant, public works type thing?
Yeah. We still, we still own the facility, we still own the generators and that type of stuff, but they would take, they would take ownership of the generators, but they would take ownership of getting them serviced and maintained.
For the facilities, we still own the capital equipment, but the?
Vehicles, rolling stock, we would not own. I do, I want to make one, what we would probably do is share the rotor. The rotor's just a piece of equipment on a trailer that reams the sewer mains and so forth, and we need that as well. That's about a $50,000 or $60,000 item. We probably just maintain ownership of that and share that.
Mr. Peterson? And then Mr. Cleveland?
Is there, I don't know, from the finance side, is there a net-net calculation as far as, so we were going to have to buy these vehicles in the future perhaps, or where we would have to buy them in the future? Is there less funding, Mike, into any equipment purchase accounts that would be offset or not have to take place because of this $200,000? In other words, is the $200,000 a net increase, or is there something that mitigates that somewhat?
I mean, from my, from my calculations, we're saving money doing this over if we were funding our own stuff, because for, like, for instance, the Vactor, the ranges on Echo wildly, but just my initial investigation on that, that alone was around like $700,000. And when you add the TV van, which is north of about 400, it would be significant loans meanwhile, because they're the private sector, and they can get stuff via their own pricing, and then share it with other facilities that they have. We're able to get the lower costs, so that's why this is recommended, because this will offset a significant issue. We were going to have an equipment replacement fund, trying to deal with all of this.
The other thing I, the other thing I like about them owning vehicles is generally, and I'm not saying that this is a problem, but generally, if we own it, we take better care of it than if somebody else is using our equipment. And therefore, they'll, they'll take, I think there could be a little more ownership on their part if they, they own it, leasing, whatever.
They have skin in the game.
They have skin in the game, yeah.
Lauren essentially asked my question, just what kind of cost savings or benefits were there in that regard?
Any other questions? No? All right. Thank you, Mr. Hartwig.
So hopefully, they'll have the contract and the agreement to us here shortly, so that we can bring it to you to get it executed.
Would that be effective January 1?
Yes.
Okay.
But I, I'm assuming, it takes a while to get these vehicles, you know, once they, the Vactor, those specialty items take a period of time to get. So whether they'll want to start it right at January 1, and that rate without having that equipment, I'm not sure yet. That will be disclosed when the, when the agreement comes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next is Ground Emergency Medical Transportation Funds Chief Winter.
Good evening. I can be up here for a while, or we can get to the budget quickly. Your choice.
Option two.
Okay. In talking with Mike, he asked me to bring this to your attention, because it's something that we have applied for. But he also said, let's make it as simple as possible, so that we can all understand this very complex issue. So, to use an analogy, I'm going to talk about pizza first.
Do you have pizza to show us?
I don't have pizza, but I can talk about pizza, because I think everybody's probably eaten pizza. Not everyone maybe has taken a ride in an ambulance. There happens to be a pizza business in town that, if you go in, you can have anything you want on that pizza for a set price, whether you want crust or not, whether you want cheese or not, if you want all the toppings, it's a set price. An ambulance service is, we set the price the same way. Whether you use oxygen, whether you use a Band-Aid, whether I use everything on that ambulance, it's a set price. And you set up the model to cover that price by, you assume that you're not going to use everything you have every single time you have a customer or a patient, and so you set your fee base upon that. The only variance on that is based upon mileage, so we do tack on a mileage rate in order to take you from point A to point B. The paying side, however, on an ambulance service is totally different from a pizza place to an ambulance service. If you want your pizza or your salad at a pizza play, place, you pay for it upfront, and that's how you get your pizza. Or you agree to pay that certain amount, and you're going to be in big trouble if you don't pay that amount. In medicine, and especially in ambulance service, we receive what the insurance company is willing to pay, and we write off the rest. So a normal insurance, they say, we're going to pay the Medicare rate, which the government sets up, is going to be what we pay, no matter how much it costs you to provide that service. And if that is, in this case, maybe 80% of what you charged, the client or the patient can be billed for the remainder amount. When we deal with Medicaid, however, Medicaid has some various rules. And that first rule in some of the documentation I gave you is their rate of, it doesn't matter where you are in the country, doesn't matter what your expenses are, we pay, we pay $115.34, period. So if that transport costs our community $1,000, they pay $115.34. It is against the law to charge a Medicaid patient. You cannot send them a bill. Therefore, we eat the difference. The GEMT program, several years ago, and I'll probably get the date wrong here if I don't look it up, back in 2015, if you look at the slide on your computer or up on the wall there, the state of Washington started this program, and it was extremely complex. It was a lot of money laundering-esque feeling about it. The point we are now jumping into, that portion of the program, is over. It used to be, you wrote a check to the state for the amount of money you thought you were going to get from the federal government, plus 20%, and then they would write you a check from the federal government for the amount minus 20%. It was their thing. Now that we are into 2019, that part of the program is no longer around, and they have figured out that, well, if we just take our share from Medicaid, that filters through us anyways, at the beginning of the year, well, that covers the 20% that we were bilking the community for. And so now, as you can see on the next slide, I believe, yeah, we are in the, in the 2019 model there, and this program here is, it's a voluntary program, not all communities have to, have to do this, but what the federal government says is, we realize that your ambulance service, or a lot of ambulance services, are not making any money by providing this service for our clients. So we believe that if you can set, or you can send us how much it actually costs you to provide this service, we'll pay half the difference between what we've already paid and what it costs you. But you have to apply for this money. So every year, you have to apply by November, and they pay you in May for the previous year. We have not done this before, because you had to have a year's cost on the books. We started November 1st last year, but because the cycle of the state is from the end of June, or it stops at the end of June, and starts the 1st of July is their fiscal year, we're getting to bill from November 1st of last year until the end of June. So it won't be a full calendar year of payment, so it wasn't a full calendar year of expense that we reported to them as well. We have hired a consultant to do this for us, at least the first time, to figure out all the forms and all that. They cost us $7,500, because it was based upon how many Medicaid transports we do in a year, which is about 60. So if, through all of this, they determine that our cost is $1,000, the reimbursement would be $450 for every one of these transports, which really gets us closer to, well, way better than $115. If it cost us $2,000, then it would be $950 some odd dollars. So the more, the more cost it, more, that doesn't have real sentence, the more, the more it costs because of the level of service you provide versus the number of transports, the more your reimbursement becomes. So if you were 100% volunteer, and you had used equipment, and you went on 10 transports a year, and that is all, you might get $100 back from the program. If you're a fully career department, and you went on, you know, 100 of these, you're going to get paid at a higher rate, because your costs are higher, and that's how they figure this out. They look at how many EMS calls you go on, how many fire calls you go on, and the percent of the EMS calls, that's the percent of your overall expense, they determine in order to figure out the rate that they're going to reimburse you at. I asked to have the GEMT topic first, because it's the most complicated of the three I'm going to talk about tonight, and I would love for any questions. I don't have pizza, sorry.
Mr. Peterson?
Is this firm actually filing a Medicare cost report? Or maybe we're not that far into the?
I don't know the actual term. Hospitals do this already, but the ground transport is since 2017.
Okay. Yeah, and it's money well spent, because within the guidelines, I know there'll be an opportunity perhaps to allocate overhead, Mike's salary, the building, the cost for the blacktop to this program too, and so, yeah.
Yeah, their, their estimate for the first operational period, which would have been that November 1st till June, is about $30,000 recovery, so worth our time.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, everyone wants to call?
I have a question. Is it going to require any more data collection on, from your behalf?
So I've submitted all the data that they requested for that. It was, you know, they wanted to know an expense report that Lisa provided for me, they wanted to know run volume, they wanted to know square footage of the building.
What about ongoing for next year's?
It would be the same info next year, yeah.
So nothing, nothing additional, great.
No.
Okay.
I have more slides, but since there are no more questions, we'll move to the next topic.
No more questions? All right.
I provided lots of reading for those who don't sleep well.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the training area?
Okay. The training area, I understand was a surprise for all of you. Wasn't a surprise for me, I didn't know about the topic. Currently, I provided a PowerPoint in your packet that was presented to the city of Wauwau. I'm not going to go through it all tonight, you're certainly welcome to look at it at your leisure. The overall concept is, is we have a drill tower that is the location where the fire department's currently trained at, that has not had any money put into it since probably You can imagine that firefighters really enjoy breaking things, and that it's a miracle that the building is still standing. It is no longer being able to be used to have fires in, it's been condemned for that by an engineering firm.
How long ago?
I think it's like four years, so.
Great. Could tell, Wauwau.
Four years. Four years, so. City of Wauwau presented to the other departments, hey, what would happen if we spruced this up, repaired the building, and added on to it? The city of Wauwau told them, well, we don't have that kind of money, and I told them, hey, we don't have that kind of money. But the city, or Wauwau Fire District 3 said, we would front the money, and you guys could pay us back in payments. And so the budget, I think, is in that presentation, I think they're a little low, I would expect that number to raise a little bit, and I don't, it has not been negotiated on how they're going to split the cost three ways, so that it's equitable, but I directed the fire chief of District 4 to make contact with Mike in order to figure that out. But I think it's the right thing to do, to pay our fair share. I think it's the right thing to do, to seek out other payers possibly, maybe the sheriff's department, if we do X can use this for SWAT training, or maybe our police department could use it for another thing, and get as many partners as we can into it. But I also realize that we don't want to get into this, again, of having a deteriorating facility, so let's make sure we budget into the future X amount of dollars for using it. That goes straight to the usage of the facility. It's about two acres over by Washington Park, it's right next to the river that runs through there. If you see it, it's kind of ghetto-looking right now, but yeah, the plan is to put some money in there. I don't think they're expecting anything from us until about 2021, but they are planning to have it built in 2020. Any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Sherman?
So with the split of the costs, and you said that district, some other district's going to front the money?
Uh huh.
So we wouldn't necessarily have to pay our full portion either next year or '21?
Correct.
We could make payments?
Correct.
And then also be planning ahead for the next time?
Correct. Because it's going to need improvement, you know, there's electricity, there's propane costs, all those things. We've been using this for free, including using their propane, using their lumber for a long, long time.
Well, let's double that.
Can we stick with that deal? Yeah.
We'll double it.
While I do believe I should be a good steward, I don't believe I should be taking advantage of people either.
Is there going to be any type of collaboration about the design of it, or, I mean, I see we have a picture here, is that already the, what they're thinking they're going to do?
So this is what they're, they're proposing, based upon what they've seen at other places. This is kind of being spearheaded by the training officers, what they feel they should build. Their goal is to build a facility to address the high-risk, low-frequency incidences, such as a structure fire, rope rescue, those types of things that we don't do every single day, but we need to be proficient at, because that's where we're going to get somebody hurt.
Sure, sure. I just wanted to make sure that your team feels like being able to have, be part of this facility would be beneficial.
So we've had a lot of input. Some of my input has been, let's plan for the future, let's bury whatever we need to today, extra conduit, put in extra power, because you don't want to ever dig this up again, because you may never get a permit again, being next to the river, to dig this up. So let's, let's plan accordingly, if you ever think something's going to go there, you know, dig a trench now.
Sure. All right, any other questions?
So the expert, the cost impact, I saw the bill was $65,000, let's assume that's low. Call it 100?
That is just to repair the one building. To add to it, I think they're looking at about 3/4 of a million, and I would say they're probably at least a quarter of a million low, just based upon me watching road projects and other things. If you're going to put asphalt down and dig trenches.
That's really judgmental, David.
Well, they didn't have the, you know, historical research on this for, you know, is this a burial ground of people who may have lived here or not, or?
I'm just not going to permit.
Sure. Okay. Ms. Yolby?
At what point do we have to make a final go-no-go decision?
So that's in, in Mike's hands, as far as negotiating price and all of those things. He did talk, he and I've had conversations about where this money might come from to make these, these payments, and I would let him talk about that, because that's both my pay grade.
Okay. Well, anyone, once again, that's another current expense item. Really, what we're talking about with City of Wauwau is the additional fire districts and other folks contributing as well, so I believe within fiscal year 2020, there's going to be a lot of outreach between everyone as far as figuring out what the final split looks like. I know there's even been outreach, at least in talking to the Wauwau T, you can milk to the free water and organ side of things. So I think we probably aren't going to know the final split on this. If I were to estimate, probably until maybe summer of 2020, with the expectation that the charge cash would start in 2021, so that's what I would expect out of it. And I mean, there are, there are federal and some state emergency management funding sources that do help with this, so, Lisa.
Good point.
Okay, any other questions?
I'm on a roll.
All right. Oh, Mr. Peterson?
The main use of these buildings somewhat is a response to the girls dorm at Wauwau, the university, the height of the building, is this worth all that training, where you're, you're thinking that's a critical need?
So I don't have, I don't have a facility where I can repeat the training over and over and over, without having a burn prop. I can't light a fire and make the conditions the same every time, I have to come to your house and burn it to the ground. I mean, and, and we do that on occasions for folks, we do burn structures down by purpose. The height is because we do have a Walmart, which is, you know, 30 feet tall, we have Home Depot, which is 30 feet tall, I have girls dorm that's seven stories tall, I have lots of tall structures in, in our community where I need to throw a ladder, or I need to, you know, are you afraid of heights? Well, let's go up there and check, and those types of things.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not just.
Just one, this layout?
Yeah. There it is.
Thank you.
Any others? All right, moving on then, to the regional fire authority discussion.
So I have no handouts, displays, or anything on this. Nothing has really changed on the topic. We hired a contractor or consultant to write a document, to see, is it feasible to, to look into this? They're looking at how our volunteers are, our paid staff, money, how it comes in, is there enough money in each of the three entities to even make it, you know, can, because we're all at different taxing rates, can there be a medium ground and all that? I don't have a draft yet of that, it's not supposed to come out until December, so I don't really have any answers from the consultants. They did come and visit with us, and I think the overwhelming opinion of the personalities of the people that came to meet with us was underwhelming, that maybe they should stick to writing and not interacting with humans. It's, maybe not, they're skill-set.
That was nice.
Sorry. Sounded good in my head.
And you and me, we carry this room.
Yes, I know.
And watch our comedy on YouTube.
I have that channel blocked. So I'd be happy to answer questions, I don't know if I have a whole lot. I think going through the process is very good, that we are participating in this. I think going through the process is very good that we are participating in this. I talked to the chief in Wauwawa, and when he first started in 1986, we were going through this process then. Every three or four years, we keep looking at it to make sure, you know, is there a better way to be doing what we're doing? We all agree there is a better way to be doing what we're doing, we just have not ever come to the point where we all agree what that way is. Because you deal with egos, you deal with politics, you deal with behaviors of different communities and how they interact. Some of the concerns from my standpoint of why it makes sense to be looking at this is, I'm very, very concerned about our community longevity-wise, as far as leadership in our fire department. I have a captain who has 40-plus years in, he could retire at any time. I have another captain who has 22 years, and I have myself. If they were to retire, I don't want to work every night and every weekend. And I don't have anyone in my ranks that's interested, that's qualified, and that lives in town, that's willing to step up, to even go into training for it. I'm totally against the wall on that topic. I'm either gonna have to pay somebody, you're all going to have to pay somebody, and that's not where I want to put my paid staff, I want them responding to every call as a grunt, pulling hose and helping people. So that's a huge concern for me. It's, from my standpoint also, to have so many fire stations within this community overlapping is a little redundant. I know of a call over on Malula Avenue where, which is not in our community, where the first arriving unit asked for another unit, and because of the way the system is at the moment, that second unit came from their fire station over on Howard and Second. And when you're doing CPR on somebody, that's a long time by yourself waiting for the next unit to arrive. Asking for help is the right thing, but the way we're designed right now, there's imaginary boundaries in place that keeps me from, unless I'm listening to my radio and knowing it's happening, to get there. And so hopefully through this process, we're working on that as well. Because as I tell all the guys, if my wife is standing on the street anywhere, I don't care who shows up, as long as it's the appropriate person that shows up and she needs help. At that point, it doesn't matter, I'll pay whatever bill.
Mr. Cleveland?
If there have been discussions about this since the 1980s, what kinds of the roadblocks have we been hitting? You mentioned a few of them, but what is, I guess, what's the biggest one here that we're hitting that we haven't been historically able to push through, and how might we be able to do that?
So dollars is a big issue. Each of the three agencies tax at a different rate, and each three have a different level of service because of that. The City of Wauwawa is a fully paid department, therefore their costs are a lot higher than ours. And in those talks, is the City of Wauwawa willing to maybe not have that same level of service? Because as a whole, we can't afford that level of taxing. I mean, it's very expensive to have 50 paid employees when only a third of them are on it at a time, so that you can cover that 24 hours a day. I think egos have gotten in the way a couple of times where somebody didn't like what somebody else said, and that was the end of that. You know, they, you know. That just happens. Some, you know, it just wasn't the right time. You know, right now, the fire chiefs, there's one that's ready to retire at any time. So it's a good opportunity, because that isn't, doesn't have to be in the mix or the play of paying for that position. That can just be absorbed into whatever the new organization is. Some of the concern is, the district pays social security, the other two departments don't for their firefighters, and the ones that don't, don't want to. You know, so it's economics and it's livelihood and it's change, and the fire service is 200 years of tradition unimpeded by progress. I mean, and the only two things that all people agree is, we don't like how things are and we don't want change. So, I mean, you know, and there's history, so-and-so treated me bad 20 years ago and I'm still holding a grudge. If you think in any consolidation, merger, or anything like that, that it's a win-win, no. It really needs to be a lose-lose, everybody needs to give up a little bit to make it better. And that's hard, you know. I don't know if this is the time that it can happen, I just don't know.
What's the driver for it? You know, in business, we're having thought and sort of companies, which you're saying resumes 100%. So what's the driver for it? We think it's tough the way it is now, we could probably do it cheaper, but it's gonna cost some jobs.
I don't know if I can do it cheaper. I don't know if that is even possible. You still have to provide the same level of service. I think long-term, it's going to help reduce cost increase, just because now you have volunteers on trucks where maybe you didn't before. It's, I don't think it's going to cost jobs. I think the driving force is, there's eight fire stations in 15 square miles. There's people going from one end of town to the other, because that's not my turf. There's a lot of redundancy in the administration, you know, there's three fire chiefs, there's two prevention offices, three training offices, there's four or five support staff, there's, you know. To eliminate some of that and make it more efficient, I think is a very good goal. You can't tell where Wauwawa and College Place and Fire District Four start or stop if there wasn't a sign.
Ms. Yobie?
Well, my comment to that, I attended one of the initial meetings that we had last year on this with the consultant that came down. And one of the things at least that I took from that is, more areas have been trying this or have done it successfully, and there's more, I mean, I'm sure that there was information back in the 80s too, but I think now, as more people have done it, you see what can work well, and the ways to do it or the things to avoid. And so, I mean, that's in our favor.
I mean, long-term, if I look at stats and all that kind of stuff, if I know, you know, if someday we did this countywide, if I know that when it's 100 degrees in this area with this humidity, there's going to be a high potential of a fire, I can send somebody there. I can't do that today, because there are volunteers in that area. So I'm reducing costs actually by having a truck ready to put the fire out before it gets big. Some of those things on a larger scale are easier. I'm not saying it's the solve-all, and, you know, our trucks can still say College Place on the side, call it Borough or something, I don't know, but, because I think community needs identity as well. And I don't want to lose that.
That's what Marjorie B. saying that she was saying.
I know, and they should still be yellow trucks too.
Well, there's certainly efficiencies to be had with this, for sure.
Yeah. We'll see.
Any other questions or comments?
So what's the next step? I mean, and if we have a consultant who maybe should pursue other hobbies, are there other people that will be brought in for this process?
So I think these are analysts that we met with, who aren't hired for public meetings. So the report is about 300 pages at this point, Gloria's reading, I know.
I'm surprised you didn't give it to us.
I don't have it, or I would have provided it, you know. So we'll get that in December supposedly. We'll need to, we'll need to go through that and make sure what they say is accurate, that they interpreted our data correctly. I think from then, that will then become a public document, it'll be presented to the three governing bodies, and we'll want direction from you of, do we continue talking about it, or do we want out of it? I, as fast as some people think it should happen, I don't think that's how College Place moves. We're more of the speed of bureaucracy, which means good things, because you give thought to it. Yes, we've been thinking about this since at least '86, but obviously, we're still not ready to jump in the pond. You know, we're, I think then we should try, and I'm not speaking out of turn here, I think we should try merging maybe some sections, without merging dollars or names or titles, but all the training officers are at one station instead of three different spots where, well, I gotta drive to your station today, because we're having a meeting. Well, and maybe they can still respond as training officers during the day when we're still staffed out of that station. Maybe all the prevention folks should be together. Something like that would be, you're trying it out, but you're not.
It's not the county.
You're not married. You're not changing your last name, your checkbook is still yours.
Okay, Mr. Cleveland?
I think it's, you know, in terms of efficiency, you know, it makes a lot of sense for the closest station to be able to go out to the closest problem. And I would hope, regardless of the outcome of, you know, who wants to be involved, is that we could make some progress, some foundation that's not built on quite yet, you know, just something that would make it just a little bit easier in the future. Some longer-term plan than, all right, we're gonna take the plunge, you know, just, you know, building ramps or something. So just here's hoping for that.
And we're working on that, we're working on an app that will show you there's a call next door to you. You know, right now, one side of me is the City of College Place, the other side is the county. I came out my front door, my neighbor had three ambulances and a fire truck at his house, I didn't know anything about it. Well, if I could see that on my phone and say, oh, they have a nosebleed, I don't want to go, versus, oh, they need some help, I think that's a great opportunity countywide. You know, those types of things. I don't want my guys going to every single call there is, because that's hurting their volunteers as well. But at some point, there's probably dollars associated to that, you know, if I'm transporting everybody from District Four, because they're on the other side of town, just because of geography, am I hurting their revenue? You know, I don't, to me, I don't care what bus takes me to the hospital, but someone should.
How's the police department do it? I know when we had, I call them events at Icewood. You know, there are people there, stunning, I bet. I mean, there were highway patrol there, there was Wauwawa. It's a school, I know that gets invisibility, but do the police forces' response, I'm gonna say, make more sense without trying to be patrolled?
Sure, so we have very, very good mutual aid criteria that enacts people to come. It doesn't work currently on the medical side so well. We're working on that, you know, but if you have a fire, it's whatever the three closest stations go. I mean, that's just how it is. And it really works out in a weird way balance-wise, that we help the district, the district helps Wauwawa and Wauwawa, and Wauwawa helps us, in almost a fairly equal way. That's just how the calls run. So that has worked for years and years. The medical side, because there's three transport agencies where there used to only be one, is, we have growing pains a little bit on that, but we're working on it.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
You know, they'll say, well, we want you to come to anything you hear that sounds major, and then the volunteers say, well, we don't want you to come. So, yeah.
Okay, you're done, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief winters. Are you gonna keep joining us and have a seat in the comfy chairs there, or are you gonna?
I bring the listen budget.
Oh, there you go.
They listen to me, it's only fair.
All right then, now, next up is our 2020 budget update with Mr. Carlton, and then Ms. Cinnamon eventually, and Mr. Rizetello. And, Mr. Carlton, welcome to your first of many.
First. I started a week and a half ago, so I got thrown into the budget process quickly. They were about, probably about 80% done with most of the data entry and bias. But we've worked hard, a lot of help from DeSherry getting us to the point we're at now. I want to stress that this is still a preliminary, there's still a fair bit of work to do with balancing funds and doing inter-fund transfers, so I'll make some notes at the end about where we're at and the next steps. You also have in board docs the full bias budget document, if you, I'm sure you want to sit and read the 107-plus pages, but all the details there. Do I get a clicker? Oh, sorry. So this presentation this year is a little bit shorter than the presentation we got in the past. We're taking it more from a little higher level, a little more detail at the final presentation, but this is just to give you an overview of where we're at and some of the highlights. Most of you probably are aware of our strategic plan, so I'll move through some of these quickly. Showing pretty well, you have it all in your packet on your screen, I think.
Play it at the projector.
Does everybody have it on their computer screens? Well, I'll just talk about it. This is basically just the budget process and where we're at in the schedule. Some key points here are the budget review and the finance committee meeting on 12/5. I guess that's one of the major points coming up. And then another city council workshop on December 3rd, and then the final hearing on the proposed budget on 12/10. So that at least gives me a few weeks to get it finalized.
No pressure.
Now, we're just gonna talk about some of the 2020 budget highlights. This is from the Capitol, and this would come straight off of the Capitol budget that's been presented previously. So I'm sure you're all familiar with some of these. These are, most of the ones on this page are small dollar amount. Just to note, one is the car court for the police department, it's in at about $110,000. So these are all right now into the 2020 budget, and we still have to vet out where we're at on costs and where the ending budget's gonna end up. This is Park, Storm and Streets, some of these projects. The Lions Park is in at $400,000, the Harvest Meadows at $25,000, the Collage to Birch on the Storm side is $135,000, the Outfall Placement $20,000, the Big Money is in the Streets, $600,000 for the four bikes. Central sidewalks is $465,000, Lamberty Resurface, $619,000, and the Damson Creek appropriation, that's in for... I didn't write down the dollar, no, I'm sorry about that.
I can say that, see there, Damson between a storm and the streets amounts to almost about $1 million now. The thing, the issue with the others, legislative appropriations get pulled out of the state transportation account, which just took a significant hit with the passage of Mr. Island's in 1976. So we're gonna lobby for it aggressively, but I just want to caution everyone, this is like rearranging deck chairs on the Titanic, I'm gonna, on the state budget side, because I might, even in the remainder of the volume, adjusting that one account, they're gonna have about, from my, a $400 million hit, so.
So it'll be interesting to see how that turns out. Continuing on with Capitol budget, we have wastewater and water on this page. Significant dollars there are the wastewater treatment improvement, that's in the budget for $2.5 million for 2020. The total expenditures on that project through 2023 is just over $20 million. The sewer, Southwest Sewer Trunk's at $5.5 million. That, we're supposed to be getting some developers' help on funding that project. Then the sewer lining program's $100,000. In water, the- that project. Then the sewer lining program's $100,000. In water, the replacement wells number one and two, that's in the budget for $4.7 million this year. Engineering on the Sky 12th Street replacement is $75,000, and site engineering is $40,000. That basically covers what's in the capital.
Quick clarification. You said replacement for wells one and two was in the budget this year? Are you talking about 2019 or 2020?
2020.
Okay.
It says carry on.
I just wanted to make sure I was not misunderstanding.
I don't have the number of what was in for 2019.
Okay, so it's all 2020.
Any questions on capital? I mean, here's just some basic highlights in the budget. A lot of these are replicated from the, from the capital side, but just major projects that are going on in parks here, Storm, Streets. This is wastewater and water. Duplication of some of the projects there, but important things for each of the departments in 2020. That brings me to the, where we're at in the preliminary budget. This is a high-level summary, just showing the initial fund balance. That would be the fund balance at the end of 2019. So it's an estimated fund balance with the revenues and expenditures, and then the ending fund balance at the end of 2020. I don't think I'll go through every line here, but this is the fund balances, beginning balance, the forecast for the beginning, revenues, expenditures, surplus, the deficit, and then the ending balance. And fortunately, we don't have any negatives in the ending fund balances.
Nice.
Now, I see there's some adjustments that need to go in. Those are basically gonna be between funds, either between reserve or capital funds and the operating funds. I can't guarantee it, but I'm pretty sure that ending number won't change a lot. Most of that's just inter-fund transfers. Here is the, a chart showing the 2020 proposed revenues. If you have any questions on any of the detail there.
If you go back one slide, so we're taking fund balances going down, it's going down by close to $2 million. And some of that component is up there under the current expense fund on line one, correct? Do we know how much of that reduction is, the timing of funding of projects? And I guess my question is how that fund balance correlates to prior years. In other words, is there assumption that we're dipping into, I guess, dipping into reserves into 2020, or is it more just the completion of projects?
Well, it's a combination, timing again, like grants and making payments. I do believe there will be a dip in into fund balance, but they have remained to be seen, because there is a gap. There is a gap that we're trying to close technically. We could fill it, but we're gonna tighten a lot more. So just keeping that in mind.
Yeah, we're gonna have meetings next week with all the department.
Yeah.
And review all the costs. Right now, remember, the budget includes all the wants.
Yeah.
So it hasn't been reviewed with each department head. This is preliminary, but this is the status right now.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
And there is, there was a net deficit in 2019 budget as well. It was about $300,000 deficit last year.
That's right.
Do we know, are we gonna be at that loss?
Um.
Or where will we end?
I'm not gonna know until we really go, I finalize the budget.
For this year?
For this, yeah. Oh.
Like, how are we ending in relation to where we thought we were?
We're gonna be a little worse than was in the budget last year. There was an air made on the calculation of the benefits. And that's gonna result in an additional $200,000 in deficit.
Okay. Thanks.
But we made sure we got the correct number in for this year.
Ms. Selby, you've had your hat on.
My recollection is that, maybe not in every fund, but overall, our reserves were a little bit higher than our policy called for. And so we were planning to slowly, so it's not really a concern that we're having some deficits.
No, no, it is. The only thing that was a little bit concerning was we were double-checking accounts on the benefit side, which we've since fixed. But just going forward, we're gonna still try and post a reconciliation of things.
But it really isn't a weird thing or a nerve-wracking thing if we dip a little bit into the reserves.
Yeah, and the policies have some percentages that we have to maintain in the fund levels, so.
So just translate melodies to second. If I understood what you said correctly, this surplus slash deficit of 1.8 is literally making somehow reserves to balance that. You could easily, but, you know, review some things.
Yeah. Well, and keep in mind, there's also like one-time stuff you're interested in too. Like, for instance, water tugs, like robbing for fire departments.
Including the Lyons Park.
Exactly.
That's 2020.
Yeah, don't forget, some of these capital reserves are being pulled down because of the major capital project and the spending that's going on. So that definitely impacts the deficit number.
That was my question.
Yeah. And I just wanna throw it down there, like, for instance, the typical life of a well, for instance. We spend a bunch of money on wells, but I mean, typically, a well like that, I mean, with the casing that we're putting in it, the wood, proper seal on, everything else, those things last for about eighty years. So we're dealing with like some major long-term stuff right now.
Absolutely. That makes sense. So, you know, I have no objection at all.
Well, we have a policy that says how much we need to have in reserve for each of our different kinds of funds.
Well, that was great, because, I mean, I read this all over before, and I can't say I committed to memory.
Yeah, it's twenty, it's basically, for most of the major funds, it's twenty percent of the revenues, not including any inter-fund transfers. So I have to do that calculation yet on all the funds. I'm happy we've got to this point.
It's not upside down right now, yeah. Right. No, I think, and I'm sorry.
I don't wanna go back to that?
No, I'm sorry. Mike, it's always a, it's a, it's really difficult to go back over the years and look at the fund balances, because there are huge, there's either borrowings or there's grants, or there's something like that that throw this thing all over the room. So, yeah.
Yeah, and you can see it on the board docs document. It's got a five-year history.
Oh.
So, if you wanna, if you wanna have the pleasure of looking through that document.
Each year has its story, yeah.
I have a few times, so.
Yeah. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Nope. Thank you.
So there's just a summary of where our revenues are generated from. And of course, you look at that loans and bonds, that's a big number. That's how we fund all those projects.
And a lot of that was the drinking water revolving fund loans for the respective well projects. And then also, keep in mind the initial seed money to start the wastewater treatment plan upgrade that we have to do for the next level of minimum. So that falls into that.
Mike, I think I ask this question every year, and I apologize. I stayed Cars Project. Time marches on, you know, and all of a sudden, what's the, the end date on the funding, of the debt funding on the, do?
I believe that was about a 20-year bond.
It was a 20?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would have, the dates escaped me, but that was.
Yeah, me too. Me too.
That was started in like 2014, 15, the bond issue, so it's straightforward.
I thought it was 2033, if I recall.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a big date.
And keep in mind that that Cars project, that basically has a dedicated funding stream going to it from the property tax, because that was something everyone voted on. So in a way, that's like its own segregating of the funding, so.
I'm sorry to bring up, it's part of the loans and bond portion here, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. And what's interesting about that is the ratio of debt that we'd wanna take on, looking at that in the future. I think we've had discussions about, yeah, what are capability or possibility in the future for bringing on more debt?
The next slide is the proposed expenditures. And right now, revenues and expenditures do balance out, so. The big numbers in the wastewater is.
That's really good. That's really good.
Eight million of the 10.6 in wastewater is for capital projects. Of the 7.8 in water, 4.7 of that is capital. Any questions? Do you need me to run through each category?
No, that's fine.
Here's kind of a summary of the 2020 budget staffing. So in 2019, we had, oh, sorry, we had forty-five full-time employees. One was, one was unbudgeted. That was done through council approval.
Which position?
The firefighter.
And you can see the detail of what's happened in 2019. 2020, we are budgeting 48.5 budgeted FTEs. And at this point in time, it includes 3.5 new employees, deputy clerk, water utility, two firefighter, and a part-time police records clerk.
Mr. Trump, you have a question?
Yes. So when we did the original budget proposals or presentations by the department heads, I was keeping track of FTEs, and we're saying here, three and a half new FTEs total.
Yeah, I started talking to departments about what we could do with state flow and reshuffle and things. And these were the most critical ones, because the whole building inspector discussion, for example, we can easily augment ourselves with a SafeDilt contract that we have. And that's such a volatile position, it isn't really right to go hire a building inspector when it just goes all over the business neck pool or do with someone. Really save that the construction inspector when SafeDilt does both those things, and we can bring them on project to project. The one different thing that you will see is the deputy clerk position, which is a substitute for my grant writer proposal, and I will lump into that. With the part-time grant writer position, I was thinking about grants manager. I called Cynthia Prosser, who tried to do that. Every time they trained up the grants manager, where they could stand on, they got hired away by either the hospitals, Sunnyside, Yakima County. And they said in one year, they went through four grant part-time people, so they could never get anything done. So the method that they approached is basically move, because they had a similar setup what we had. And the idea here is that by essentially having a deputy clerk who could take on our community events, which definitely, from when we've seen the community embraces and uses a good thing, they can do that. Lisa can work more on records and supervise. And then DeSherry, since she has the finance background and excellent work in grants management and knows what we're doing now, she can dedicate more time to the finance and HR side of things. So we view this as more sustainable, because when I talked to my county department prosser, they said that like the worst thing you could do was that part-time grants position, because they just, you can hire away by everyone in that home, pay a lot of money, so.
It's neat to see that the department request was reconciled in a way that seems to make a lot of, I think the deputy clerk is very important for you guys, since if you look at how important grants are.
I think.
You know, when I first started this, it was kind of very, how much are you, I'm glad to.
Well, and the one thing I might add, because originally, to try and look at the deputy clerk position from another perspective, I was originally trying to get a downtown association going here, which I mentioned a couple of years ago. The issue is that if you can get a downtown association standing up and exist for a whole year, then you can essentially tap into that Main Street tax exemption program, and the businesses could get their BNO taxes essentially reimbursed and then fund the downtown association. The issue is that our size of community, that association would somehow have to stand on its own with a full-time paid executive director for a full calendar year before qualifying. We had some set-up meetings with the businesses and multiple invitations. The sad part is when we had the meeting and Tito next door spearheaded it, only three people showed up, and then we had a follow-up.
And that includes Tito.
Yeah. And then we ended up having a follow-up meeting, and pretty much what boiled down to was that, well, we really like the community events, but we really like, don't wanna like help in that regard, so figure it out. And then fewer people showed up, and then basically Tito was lost. So in summary, what I'm saying is that I've come to the conclusion that the dynamics here are a little different than Colfax, because over there, you have Main Street, and everyone's already coalesced together. I think over time, as our Main Street builds, then we will see that coalescing happen. But right now, I think if we want the community events to continue, I'm seeing that we have to take the bull by the horns and essentially run them. And it requires staff to do that, because definitely as the events have grown, it's definitely put a string on Lisa, DeSherry, Carol, and everyone. But like, for instance, with Fall Festival, previous year, we had attendance of 900 people. What was reported to be this year is it went up to 1,400. So.
Those are only the ones that I actually got clicked on my clicker. It was almost 1,500.
Wow.
I know I missed people.
So this, this makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, so this makes a lot of sense, but I just wanna explain that, because I know that there'll probably be some folks, oh, well, you could do a downtown business district. Well, that requires people to show up and pay for first year. And I've dedicated a lot of time to trying to make that happen. And I'll tell you, I burned too much time in that regard. I don't think it's gonna happen soon. So we just have to take the bull by the horns, and if people complain they can't talk to me enough, they should have showed up, so.
I think that's a good solution. Thank you. Very clear.
Yeah.
So continuing on, that full 48.5 has been included in.
It's in the budget, yeah.
Yeah.
Just a brief little summary on wage increases. Standard cost of living increase and negotiated union contracts, that's, all will still need to be approved prior to knowing what the number's gonna be. Projected healthcare insurance for the year, we currently are getting no increase on a majority of the staff. There's a couple, please, 1%, and then one retiree at 7%.
Is that because we're changing insurance companies?
That's, that's not medical.
No, they have the AWC.
Oh, AWC.
This is health.
Same insurance company.
Okay, I got.
It's liability and auto, it's changing.
I got you. Okay. Ms. Selby?
How does the paid family leave stuff that's coming up affect all of this?
Can you comment on that, Sean?
As far as a sick leave is concerned, I think some of those rules are still up the air. From the trainings I've been to, they're still trying to decide, you know, when you, whether you'll be able to make a difference with your sick leave, what they're going to do. The city provides a good amount of sick leave, so, and when you do the paid family medical leave, it's a percentage reimbursement. It's not the entire, your entire wages.
So you're not there yet?
Don't know, really. I mean, I don't think the final rules are out as far as using it. We're not quite there yet. They finalized the rules as far as us paying for it.
Yeah. They don't even know who's gonna administer it and how it's gonna be requested and stuff like that.
Exactly. So still in holding. I mean, if it were me, I would just use my sick leave, because I know I'm gonna be fully compensated. You know, the city's generous, and I mean, unless I had something traumatic go wrong, I would just use my sick leave. But we'll see.
Any other questions?
I should have answered this question. Does this question include the negotiated increase for the. Does this question include the negotiated increase for the police department?
Yeah, and I might go a little, because that's a bargain position. I can talk about specifics of that side after we're done with the workshop because that's a closed. But I definitely will advise you.
That's why those numbers aren't included here. Here's a few of the goals that the departments have established with Mike. I won't go over them in detail, but just sort of the things that are happening. Give you just a second if you want to look at it on your screen. A lot happening. For me, the finance, we're going to complete doing the financial policies this year. Implementation of the Gristeka budgeting software, which I'm not quite familiar with it yet, but I've heard that it's supposed to make the whole process a lot easier, a lot of setup though. And then we'll be transitioning away from ISAT banking, oh, from banner bank to community bank. And that's going to happen at the start of the year. There's a few more of the goals for some of the other departments. And any of the costs that are associated with any of those goals have been included in the budget at this point. Here's a summary of the capital facility budget for 2020. You can see the detail on the left with a nice little pie chart. And of course, the two big ones are wastewater and water. The wastewater, we have the wastewater treatment plant project, that's 2.5 million. And the Southwest sewer trunk line's 5.5 million. And the 5.4 in water, that's 4.7 of that is wells, one and two. And not much spending in administration, you see.
I appreciate it. Which would show up if I put a decimal, a couple of decimal points in it.
You're above fire, so you might want to make some cuts.
Here's the ER and R budget for the year. I believe there's, the big one is there's a fire.
We're here on Thursday.
Tanker, I know I have the wrong terminology.
The water.
The water, tender, that's it. I got corrected on that at the Fall Festival. He said if he wanted a tanker, a plane would come rushing in.
Oh, we should get one of us.
I don't think that's in the budget.
Maybe next year.
Yeah, next year, first from pencil.
I won't go into detail on this slide as well. It just shows us where our grant funding sources are. Thought that was important to show. Basically, 5.8 million of our capital spending is going to be driven through grants. And that's just for this year.
So why do we need a grant wire?
Because we want 6.8 next year.
I got the right word.
Mr. Peterson?
Mike, the impact of I-97, I-76. You know, I was just, I was online, you know, looking at, what's the Sound Transit, $7 billion hit over 15 years? I don't know what, you know, so for our city, I know they've frozen WSDOT funds or new projects or?
It's just newer projects, so our existing grant contracts that were authorized, those are still saved. So Lamborghini is happening. Anything where they already did like a competitive competition too. So if we do get metal work, for example, that's protected. But where that's going to cause issues is legislative appropriations. So unless something changes or if the lawsuits ever being filed, you overturn it, then I think we'll get either dammed up otherwise it's going to be difficult longer term. I think what you're going to see happen, which isn't good for us, is that a primary driver for a lot of our road funding is transportation through Florida. And while the funds that go directly to that aren't threatened, I think what you're going to see is that the state is going to start peeling away the gas tax that goes to TIB to backfill all of the WSDOT programs. And then we're going to be in a predicament. If I were to think about it in the future, I think a lot of the cities long-term are probably going to have to start taking it all by the horns on the street projects. And there are other options like street utility fees and other things that look at that way. But I would not be surprised if over time you see the TIB is like a shell that's formed yourself because while it didn't threaten that gas tax, because that's just there, I think you're going to see a bunch of that being redirected and backfilled the rest of the state gaffers. And then TIB will go the way of the Public Works Trust Fund that won't really exist, so.
Long-term, yeah.
Yeah, but long-term, we have, long-term we have issues. It's good that, it's good we got so many grants when we did from TIB, so we could at least get ahead on our materials. But like in the next couple of years, we were going to try to get like 12 streets reconstructed and stuff like that. I would not be surprised by the time we get to that era, if we're going to have to start looking at like a street utility line or something to that effect. Because with this initiative, they even peeled away the ability to administrate, we do the local tax events. So like the, yeah, so like the Duporto Bridge and Richland. They actually put a bond where it's guaranteed with the TBD debt. And now the TBD no longer exists and they put the bond issue guaranteed by it. So I mean, it has ramifications all over the place.
Hands a lawsuit, so.
And I'm sure the hot topic for everybody will be the utility rate increases for 2020. Currently in the budget, we have water. It averages a 4% increase in total, 5% on water. For the water reserve, 2.5%, the tax of 4%. You remember that the 2020, or the 2019 rates were based on the three-year rate that was approved by council, but they didn't get to doing the new rate review in 2019. So I assume we'll be proposing a one-year resolution to just put in an increase for one year and then look at a new utility, I'm just blanking on the word. No rate study, thank you.
So because we run a state-recognized like water system, every couple of years you have to do a full-on water system master plan. We're now at that point where we have to do that and as part of that, there's the rate study element of that. With sub-rates for the next couple of years, so we'll have a longer-term picture after we have studies done. We're sharpening our pencils from the last time where we thought there was a threat of water going to 9%. We've sensed if any blow sharpens our pencils, get it down to around the 5. And then sewer and slumber frankly, within the realm of your standard of inflation.
Yeah, and those are also based on the resolutions that were passed two years ago. So that's consistent with that resolution. Any questions? And the next steps for finance side, we have to complete the inter-fund transfers. One thing that wasn't done prior to me getting here was for the, for the programs, for the rate studies, they haven't been updated to reflect current information. So the numbers that are coming out of the rate model don't necessarily correlate to the increases. So I have to look at those rate models and get them updated. So a couple of them were, the water one was 16 to 19. It hadn't been updated for 18 and 19? 18 and 19? So it's really pushing along information that might not be true. So you don't know if the estimated revenues are correct, costs are correct, the capital might have changed. So I need to look at those models and get them updated. But right now, those are the numbers that are in the budget. And same thing on the other two models as well, those have not been updated, but I think it was just 19. One was done in 18, or I think they were both done in 18? So they just have to be updated with 19, 17?
That's when the resolution was passed.
Those will have to be dealt with next year. As I said earlier, Mike and I are meeting with each department manager to examine the costs in detail. See if we can sharpen our pencils.
Nice updated picture.
Oh, thanks.
That's me line, yeah.
And then I have, of course, I have to update the budget model and get everything tied up, balanced and finished. That's all I have, any questions?
Welcome, thank you.
Actually, we have some questions.
It's clear that it's all very preliminary and that there's still a lot of tweaking going on. But thank you because at least it gives us an idea.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Of what's being worked on. All right, that is the end of all our agenda items. Do I need a motion? Or do we just adjourn?
We're adjourned. I want to specify that the next thing that we're going to talk about is not subject to OPMA at all. But I also need to remind you guys that that's the only thing we can talk about. Because since it's not subject to OPMA, we don't have to go into executive session, we don't have to time limit ourselves. But if you discuss something else, business, city business related, then it's a violation. So we'll only be talking.